All right, it's six o'clock. I'll call tonight's school board meeting to order. Rule call has been taken and we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next up is to review, revise, and approve tonight's agenda. If there's, is there a motion to approve the agenda as written? Moved by trustee Wake, second by vice chair of Gears. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. All trustees in favor for approving the agenda as written, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is public comment. Public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair or acting chair may interrupt or terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order over three minutes or personally directed to an individual. Let's rewind that. Next up, item four. Point of order. Approve the minutes. So next up is to approve the board regular meeting minutes of February 25th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by trustee Wake, second by vice chair of Gears. Any public comment on this agenda item? All trustees in favor for approving the minutes, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Now, public comment. And I won't read that again. Is there any public comment?
Yes, we have public comment tonight. First up is Jeff Busman.
Just signing in. My name is Jeff Busman. I am a parent of a child at Chief Charlo. I know there's a lot of teachers here and thank you for, teachers, for letting me cut in front of you because I gotta go pick up a child at 6:15. So I will try to be succinct and I hope other teachers will reiterate my comments. But these are about the cutting of the teachers, cutting and increase in class sizes and leveling schools. This is a horrible idea. This should be the last thing that we do. If we are in a very emergency stage, maybe, but I don't see where this is going to help public instruction whatsoever. Has anybody here on the board or, and I know this is a rhetorical question that I can't ask you actual questions, but have you been in a fourth grade classroom? Have you been in charge of a fourth grade classroom? It's not easy. These teachers work really hard and then you're gonna increase their class sizes? It's mayhem in there. Give me a break. My kids get a decent education, but if you add three, four, or five kids to their class, it's only gonna go down and get worse. This is horrible. And what better sign of inefficiency are we gonna have to the public when we have to bus these kids all over town where you have a 40-foot yellow bus driving through town with one kid inside because we have to figure out this leveling issue? Building in space for new kids during the year just makes sense. I'm really frustrated. I'm really frustrated that the timing of this is such. Do you know what most of these teachers are doing right now? They're at conferences, so they can't be here to public comment. They're, they're spending their time with the parents talking about their kids. Okay? Like, they're doing a really good job and they're doing the best they can. Please figure this out. Don't increase class sizes. Don't cut these teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lila Weston.
Please no applauding. Thank you. I'm the administrative assistant at Hawthorne Elementary. I was here at a board meeting when it was, save the arts was the focus, and I voiced my concerns back then and that was due to our ESAR cuts. I'm back tonight to let you know that my concerns have not decreased and I'm feeling a little bit more defeated this year after going through that already once. I pointed out that I was feeling the pressures of having to wear multiple hats in my role. I lost my part-time help at the beginning of this year. I have been able to manage that because I never had help prior to COVID, but man, it was nice when I had it. Nurse hours were decreased this year and when the nurse is out, the responsibility of that falls mainly on the office secretary. We have high-needs kids at my school, whether it's behavior, medically complex children, or working with families in transition. I'm just a regular person. I do not have a degree in nursing, counseling, or social work, yet I find myself filling in the gaps. We're understanding the budget shortfalls from the ESAR funds. Jobs were cut, things were done, there's nothing we could do. We couldn't hold positions that we didn't have money to compensate people with. Now, the conversation revolving around packing classrooms to the absolute limit and toeing on the guidelines is pretty sketchy. I understand having full classrooms that children can learn in and be successful is what we're going for, but not overcrowding classrooms with over 30 kids. Overflow paras aren't always filled, so I can't see how we can go over in some classrooms hoping that we'll get those positions filled without knowing for sure that we can actually do that. Smaller class sizes give teachers the opportunity to make connections, pick up on individual needs of students, identify deficits, and I don't think that that's in my opinion. There's a lot of data out there that proves smaller classrooms are extremely beneficial to student learning. We had a fifth grade classroom a couple years ago that was packed to 30. You could hardly move in there. A student backed his chair out, a para walked behind him, neither of them saw it happening. She fell, she broke her arm severely, and we had to take her away by ambulance in front of a classroom of fifth graders. Actually, we had to evacuate it to get the ambulance in. In elementary, we teach students how to be students. If you continue to cut and pack our classrooms, you're gonna end up with kids less prepared for your higher grades. We carry a lot of responsibility when it comes to teaching kids how to become well-rounded adults, and that carries on through their lifetime and their education. What I'm trying to say is that our jobs are already hard enough. Our motto is forward-thinking and higher-achieving, and I'm skeptical with potential cuts that we're gonna be able to live up to that. Behaviorally, we're struggling. We have kids with high needs at all of our schools. We have fabulous behavior interventionists and a case manager through partnership. We work hard, but it's a daily team effort. The need is so high that my office often turns into ground zero, and I would love to invite you guys to be a fly on the wall, but can't do that because of FERPA. So, it would, it would blow your mind to see how much we do as a team for behavior through our schools. In my area, we also have the Meadowlark. We have not had a good collaboration between the YWC Meadowlark and MCPS. We have really hard-
Ms. Weston, thank you so much. Just three minutes. Next, we have Emily Earl.
My name is Emily Earl and I am a fourth grade teacher at Hawthorne Elementary. I am speaking to you tonight as a voice for teachers, students, and parents across MCPS. As a whole, we are completely aware and understanding of the financial circumstances MCPS found itself in during the previous school year and in planning for the current year. Myself, along with several of my colleagues, were part of the cuts made and thankfully we were able to find a place to land. We also understand that the overall, that overall, the district enrollment is down and legislative funding is still in question, and while filling classrooms to the absolute maximum physical capacity could alleviate some financial strain, the effects will be detrimental to the education the students receive as well as the morale and well-being of the staff. In recent years, the behaviors exhibited within our public schools have exponentially increased. If plans continue the way they are heading, teachers will be expected to manage not only an excessive number of students in their room, but also an excessive number of behaviors. When teachers have to stop what they're doing over and over and over again to manage behaviors or even evacuate a classroom because of unsafe behaviors and a student escalation, how do you think that affects the learning of the rest of the class? And that's every day. As it is now, there's barely enough time to get everything taught between managing behaviors and proctoring assessments, let alone with four to five extra students added to the roster. In addition to the aspect of behavior management, adding to class sizes will also mean adding to the number of meetings to attend, tests to given grade, IEP and 504 accommodations to be made and met, and after-school conferences to have with families. While there is language in our class size policy that allot a part-time para for overflowed classrooms, and we respect and deeply appreciate the work of our district's paras more than they know, simply adding part-time help will not solve this issue, and it does not equate to a state-set classroom size. Adding more workload to a teacher's overflowing plate of responsibilities will leave you with a higher burnout rates and an unhappy staff and community in a place that should make us excited to get to come to work every single day. There are so many more things to consider when deciding on class sizes besides the fact that research has yet to show large class sizes have a negative effect on a student's ability to access an education. Yes, we may be physically able to fit 30-plus students into a classroom, but why should we have to? I urge you to consider every possible effect on students, staff, parents, and the future of this career. The Missoula community expects and deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Laura Smith.
My name is Laura Smith and I am currently in my 15th year of teaching with the majority of that being in the elementary setting. My daughter will be in third grade at Chief Charlo next year, and I was just informed there will be two classes at 33 students each. I feel strongly about what is being suggested as an educator and a parent. State law requires there be no more than 28 students in a third-grade classroom with an overload of six, four students per classroom not allowed. Missoula County Public Schools is proposing we push our class size limit to the very limit by having an overload of five students. Administration was quoted this past September saying, "If you have a district or a school where you have a teacher who is not performing well, it doesn't matter if you have 10 kids or 20 kids, they are not performing well." What this quote fails to address is what an overloaded classroom can do to an effective teacher. A teacher's number-one resource is their time, using it to impart knowledge and guide young learners. With an increase in student, also comes an increase in IEPs, 504s, as well as the diverse needs, excuse me, student needs that come with each individual child. Teachers are spread even thinner, take more onto their plate, all while told to make it work with the limited resources they are provided. It is difficult to understand how a district can promote teacher mental wellness, but in the same breath tell them they are not worthy enough of class sizes that adhere to state standards. It is disheartening to me that it seems MCPS is simply thinking about students as a number and a price that comes along with them filling a seat in our classroom. Our children deserve better than that. They deserve to have quality education where their diverse and individual needs are met. Of course, we want our students to succeed academically, but we also want them to thrive socially and emotionally while thinking critically in a safe and nurturing community. I want my daughter to feel that she matters in her classroom and is seen and heard as a whole person. While I know her teacher will do everything in their power to ensure all students will succeed, the larger a class becomes, the harder it is to accomplish this. A class size requirement is there for a reason, especially in the most formative years. While some may think class size does not matter, the state regulations in place say otherwise. 28 should be the limit as it is best practice. Any more than that is a detriment to our students and our teachers. I understand enrollment is declining and budgeting is an issue, but I assure you, cutting teachers and increasing class sizes will not entice families to join the MCPS community. To the school board, I implore you to think about our students and teachers. I do not believe that any one person here could tell me that this decision is in the best interest of our children, and because of that, this option should not be a consideration. The school board is elected to represent their constituents. I implore you to consider the effect of this decision on the students, families, and teachers. I will continue to stand with our educators and students, and I hope you will too. Let's continue to make MCPS forward-thinking and high-achieving by putting our students first. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Mackey.
Yes. I first want to start by saying thank you, board members, for being here, for volunteering your time to try to help support our students, our community. And I also want to say thank you for all the teachers in the classroom. I can think of no nobler profession shaping the lives of the future, the future of our community, the future of our planet. It's the teachers that make the magic happen. The rest of us, myself included as a parent, are support, support for the teachers that, that are doing the work to shape our students. I've been so impressed during such a challenging time over the last couple of years by how MCPS has communicated and reacted, even with all of the difficult cuts that had to be made last year. You know, I felt like it were, it were, it was struggles and cuts that they weren't, they weren't, it's not good news, but it was things we could do without, without sacrificing our students' well-being and rallying around our teachers and the rest of the staff that, that make our schools happen. The proposed cuts for next year and increased class sizes have me worried, worried that we aren't being true to our values, that we're not actually following through with, with what we've told our public and our stakeholders and our children, and will be a detriment that will likely negatively impact our students and community for years to come. If we, if we're burning out our teachers, if we're asking them to, to do too much with, with too little by packing the classrooms to a size that just is, is, is 33, 33 third graders in a one room. We have talented teachers. I just don't think, unless we have, unless we have pursued every other option out there. And I don't know we're there because if this is where we're at as a school district, I feel like we're throwing up our hands and saying, "We have failed and we are, we are willing to fail our students and our teachers." And I don't want us to be there. I want us to hopefully rally together as a community of parents, teachers, board members, staff, to come up with solutions that can enable us to have a better way forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Shannon Rinker.
As the executive director of the Missoula Education Foundation, I wanted to take this opportunity to speak about this year's high school and middle school teachers that received the educator of the year awards. I just wanted to describe the amazing work that they did. This is a program that the Missoula Education Foundation Student Board conducts every year, and they select one educator at the high school level, one educator at the middle school level, and one educator at the elementary school level. We have yet to start the nomination process for the elementary educator of the year, but I thought I would take the time to describe the work that's being done by our current middle and high school educators of the year. And I just must say that overall, the amount and the quality of nominations that are coming in for this program are incredibly impressive. And a shout-out to my, to the MEF Student Board Chair, Faith Yu, for leading this terrific cause. First, I'd like to speak about the high school educator of the year, Ashley House. As a special education teacher, Ashley's leadership, compassion, and dedication are unmatched. She advocates for every student creating real-world opportunities and offering unwavering support. One parent said, "Ashley works with our students and families with tremendous compassion." And I just want to thank Ashley for making such a difference in our school and our community. The next is the middle school educator of the year, Aneska Elam. Known for her work in BPW and Project Lead the Way, Aneska inspires her students to challenge themselves and always give her time and energy to support them. One nomination shared, "She pours countless hours into mentoring kids outside of her school. Her efforts are truly Herculean." Aneska, her dedication and kindness is truly leaving a lasting impact. So I just wanted to congratulate these two extraordinary educators. We've already done our surprise and it went so well. So shout-out to Ashley House and Aneska Elam. And I will be back to give you some information on the elementary educator of the year when we complete that process. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tessa Masters.
Okay. Hi, my name is Tessa Masters. I am a third-grade teacher at Chief Charlo Elementary, and I am here to talk for teachers, but also for the community and just the way things are, you know, happening right now. I am the third-grade teacher that got cut this year, as you heard some people talking about. And I know that you've heard the impact that it's gonna have on students and classrooms, and that is very true. It's also going to have an impact on teachers and buildings. Our building has been through a lot the last few days. It's been tough. But we also want to talk about the impact it's gonna have on the community and more than just my school. I'm not the only school this is happening to. I know it's happening at Lewis and Clark and other schools as well. And essentially, what is happening is we cut a third grade so that we could go down to two. It is gonna put us at 33. The district said they're gonna work not to have 33. But the way they're gonna do that is Jeanette Rankin currently has 21 kids in each of their second grade, and they didn't cut a third grade. So they're gonna keep 21 in those classes, which is disheartening to hear because when you look at the third-grade teachers at Jeanette Rankin, I have more seniority and tenure than some of them, and they chose to cut at our school instead of that school. But also, what they are planning on doing is what they're calling leveling. So what they want to do is they want to have some of the families from our school be leveled to Jeanette Rankin. And I personally think right now, this is the biggest issue. They have overnumbers in third grade at my school. They now have overnumbers at Lewis and Clark as well. You know, I'm here for all teachers because it's not just me. And what they want to do is move families and childrens away from their home school to other schools that have room, which sounds great. It sounds lovely. Okay, we won't have 33. We'll have 28 or 30. But what about those families? I sat in a conference last night with a parent who cried because she has a third grader in my class right now who should be at Jeanette Rankin, but Jeanette Rankin didn't have room for her. And so she's in my classroom and she's lovely. I love her. But this parent also has a kindergartner coming in next year, and she went to the district office to register that kindergartner and asked, "Can my daughter come back to Jeanette Rankin?" And they said, "Yeah, we're not sure. Maybe. We'll have to let you know in April." So she's crying because, "Are my children going to be at two different schools? Am I going to have to take my kindergartner to Chief Charlo? I live three blocks from Jeanette Rankin." That's why we bought our house, right? And people are buying their homes based on those schools, and I think that we need to think about that. We need to think about-
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. That's three minutes. Thank you. Susan Ray.
I am Susan Ray and I teach second grade at Chief Charlo, and I'm here on behalf of the kids, the 66 second graders at Chief Charlo, who as of this moment will be split into two third-grade classes resulting in 33 kids per room. That number is five over accreditation standards. Class size matters. I beg you to reconsider and reinstate, Tessa. I understand declining enrollment in our district. Last year, Chief Charlo lost three classrooms, but this specific group of kids is live and in person, and I spend my day with 22 of them. I've been told that things are still changing, yet if this were to happen, here's what it would look like. 66 kids, 33 in each class, and remember, these are eight-year-olds. Picture yourself there. 33 eight-year-olds in 33 desks. You have to move most of the other furniture out because there isn't room, and you are the number-one person responsible for their third-grade education. 18 of them are on IEPs, which requires extra planning and meeting time. Some have 504s, which need extra considerations. Many have trauma in their life and behaviors result like crying, screaming, throwing things, full-blown temper tantrums. And these things occur in every classroom and have to be dealt with. Class size matters. This is conference week for us. Those teachers will have 33 conferences, probably more because some split families come separately. That's 13 more conferences than I'll have in the next few days, and that's over three more hours of time just meeting with the parents, let alone the prep. How on earth could two teachers handle this load? How would they meet the needs of the gifted kids, the challenged kids, the quiet kids, the explosive kids, the thank God-for-them-normal kids? A district that claims to care about the mental health of its employees cannot put two teachers in a position that knowingly jeopardizes their mental health. What about their own life, their own kids? Teaching is not a job. It's not even a career. It's a calling. We break our backs for these kids, and you would be asking the impossible. In my 44 years of teaching, these are the most challenging years, the most challenging kids, the most challenging parents, and you would be making it worse by allowing 33 kids in a classroom. Class size matters. The final sentence of the, on the MCPS About Us webpage says, "Missoula County Public Schools continues to strive for success for every student, every day in all our schools." If you allow 33 kids in one classroom, that sentence will no longer be true. Class size matters. Please consider reinstating Tessa at Chief Charlo. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Drextra.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for your time and allowing us to be here. I am coming to you as both a parent of a student at Chief Charlo, as well as one of the special educators at Chief Charlo. My title is K2, but my role is early-lit, first grade, second grade, and I share third grade with my counterpart who shares the other half of third grade, fourth and fifth grade. As special ed teachers, we are maxed out. We bend over backwards to meet the needs of all of our students, and I take home way more than I should. I'm in it for the kids. My, I have two concerns with this process, the first one being 33 kids. We were lucky to have the chance to meet with our superintendent and HR and our union rep yesterday to talk through some of this, and we were assured it would not be 33 kids, but the reality is, is it could be. This class size is 28. If you go over, you can have up to 33 with a para. We're already short-staffed with paras in the district. Paras don't get paid well. They don't make enough to support themselves. I'm coming to you for the 18 IEPs that are in this group of 66 kids. It is unmanageable. It is not realistic to put nine IEPs in each class, and that does not count behaviors or 504s or families in need. That is solely the individualized education plans. My second level of this is the actual level- My second level of this is the actual leveling process that's going on. I understand that we can't sit here with nine third grade classrooms at twenty-one kids each, but we also can't sit here with four classrooms in upwards of thirty. Right now, we're looking at two at Chief Charlo over thirty, and is that my timer? No, just someone else's timer. Okay. We're looking at two at Chief Charlo, both over thirty, and two at Lewis and Clark, both over thirty. Jeanette Rankin will have twenty-one in each of their three classes. The leveling process would then move some of the kids from our top-heavy classes over. But what you're doing is, in order to reduce teachers and to save money, you are forcing students who have chosen to come to Chief Charlo to return to their homeschools. And at the same time, we have a large number of students who are not at our school that want to be at our school. We have nineteen families that were leveled to Russell last year. At the end of summer, one of our kindergarten teachers took a leave of absence, and so instead of filling her position, these children, nineteen children, were sent down to Russell School. If we are going to force third graders to go back to their homeschool, can we please bring back those twenty kids back to Chief Charlo and keep the first grade teacher that we've also cut this week? And my other concern is that while this process has been very transparent last year, we knew ahead of time we were losing teachers left and right. We knew we were going down. We knew there were going to be bigger class sizes. We knew all of that. We were planning for that. Everyone was pink-sliped. This year, our non-tenure teachers were not pink-sliped. So our displaced teacher, who has been teaching early lit for twenty years, six of which in the district, does not have the opportunity to take the spot of a second-year teacher teaching early lit in a different elementary school. So I understand so much of our process, and I still have so many questions as to why we're choosing to stick with upwards of thirty kids in a class. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Slagle.
Hi, my name is Katie Slagle. This was the last minute. I got notice of this nine minutes before, and I'm shooting from the hip. I am a parent and a childcare provider in this county and city of Missoula, and my children attend Chief Charlo. I think I'm going to start and just be personal for this because I'm kind of very shocked as a parent that I would put my children in the hands of these decisions. My daughter came back from homeschooling. I knew there was a learning curve for her from COVID. I homeschooled, and I sent her back. I called what she needed from Chief Charlo, and they didn't listen to me. And Tessa Masters saved my child. She noticed that she was not ready for third grade and put her back to second with Mrs. Ray. Literally put her with her, and we sat together and realized this was what she needed. If you put thirty-three children in one class, do you think my Gretel would have gotten caught and been put in the right class? No, she probably would be behind, struggling. Her self-esteem would be just in the dumps. And Mrs. Masters saved her. My daughter is in love with her. Like, it's clear nobody sat in a room and watched Mrs. Masters do her thing because this wouldn't even be a question. And then my son is also one of those kids that has behavior stuff not based on family raising, based on his own little brain. And so if he's to enter a classroom with thirty-three kids, I'm afraid he'd have to be homeschooled because he could not handle that kind of environment. In fact, Chief Charlo won't even give him a 504, and I have to do the work for him because they're so overwhelmed with children that need help, and I chose to help him. Summer program was created, and you know, the majority of the kids in summer program were the kids that struggled. And the teachers were overworked and can't help those kids, not by choice. My son had to go to summer school because his poor teacher couldn't get help and also had all these other children. I'm scared for lack of supervision in a classroom that size because I have ratios in a childcare, and I have fifteen kids to me and one other person. A classroom of how many third graders with one teacher, thirty-three? I could only imagine some of the behaviors that would get unnoticed, and I have experienced that as a parent even in schools. This could be a push for more homeschooling. I'm just, I'm scared, truly. I will be reevaluating my children because I want them to be successful, to do well when they go to high school and college.
Thank you so much. That's three minutes.
All right. Thank you so much for that public comment. Next up will be reports and announcements, and first up will be the student trustee reports. And Big Sky High School, it's over to you.
Hi, guys. I hope you are doing well. Just a quick recap of the last month from Big Sky High School. Our girls are heading to Bozeman this weekend for state basketball. They are the first seed in the West. We play Bozeman High School at eight PM on Thursday. We're very, very excited. Along with that, this past couple of weeks, we brought home a girls' state wrestling title. For one of our girls, she was a junior, and we also had five other individuals place at state, and we could not be more proud of that. With spring rolling around, yesterday started spring sports for softball, baseball, and track. We had thirty-five boys come out for baseball this year, and they're very, very excited. They've been working on their field and have had a lot of improvements. Along with that, we have twenty-eight girls for softball. And then for our track team, we had over two hundred kids come out, which is the most we've ever had. And we are very excited because we've also gained a couple new coaches, and we cannot wait to meet them and start training with them. On to the more academic side, our National Honor Society gathered last weekend and reset all the clocks around the school, rechanged all the batteries, and made sure they were all up to date with daylight savings. Our Health Science Academy ambassadors, our life skills, and our key club came together for the polar plunge. Our school raised one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars for this organization, and we had twenty individuals jump altogether. If you guys would like to see photos, there's some on our Big Sky High School Instagram. Shout out to that. Along with that, our school gained a new club called Science Olympiad. And this last weekend, they actually went to Bozeman and competed for the first time ever, and they brought home eleven medals in total, and it's just so exciting to see what they're going to do with that. Two weeks ago, our school held International Week, which is a week filled with films, events, and other activities, teaching the student body about the other states, countries, and international things going around. We showed over twenty films, and we even had four of our own students create their own films and show up this. This is put on by the IB diploma students for our school. Our BI students went to GradCon last week in preparation for their BI presentations. Their BI presentations are a four-month research project that they do a ten-minute presentation on at the end of the year, and they've been working very, very hard and gaining a lot of knowledge on that. And then lastly, our school has been working on a new weight room. They've fundraised a lot of money to get new equipment and stuff. They also are getting a new weight room program, and we are very excited to start that and roll that out next year. Thank you, guys.
All right. It's exciting to hear about baseball now that we have it in the high schools. Next up is Helgate High School.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Faith. I'm the student body president at Helgate. To start off, we have a spring spirit week this week, and our freshman officers have headed that. This is their first project. Secondly, we have our winner decided for the mural project, and we're really excited to have our artists at Helgate work on that. We had an amazing choir concert last night, and we have selected our song for graduation as well. And we're going to have our choir perform or have their song played as well, as we do every year. And on Instagram, we're going to be highlighting our SRO and other staff members who are not commonly recognized, such as our janitors as well on our Instagram page. And then we also saw a mental health partnership happen for an NHS project, and Stella will talk more about what's going on there. We've also continued on with our end-of-year planning, and we've decided on a date for Senior Sunset. And then we have an exciting event coming up with the League of Women Voters of Montana. And we're actually looking for about three school board members to come and talk to some of our students so that they know more about this process as well as for the future voters. So if you're interested in that, please let me know.
All right. Hello, everybody. I'm Stella Harvard, and I'm the senior class president at Helgate High School. We are also excited to announce that our Boys and Girls Basketball are both going to state this year, which we're really excited for. Additionally, tennis and track have started for my school this week. As well as continuing on with NHS, we have received our stalls for graduation, so a lot of us who are a part of that club are very excited. Additionally, I just finished my NHS project. I raised over six hundred dollars to refill the Missoula Food Bank, almost like pop-up shelters around our city, just for those facing food insecurity. I also filled those things with items such as like emergency blankets, socks, and anything to do with hygiene as well. Additionally, all of our cords are ordered for all of our clubs, which is very exciting. And we also have our prom theme decided, which is going to be Met Gala, and we have opened up a prom closet, which is where people are able to donate their dresses that they've worn in the past to those who may not be able to afford a dress this year, and so that way, everybody is welcome at prom. It doesn't face any sort of like insecurity or embarrassment, possibly not having a dress to wear. Additionally, BPA went to state, and there also is a strong academic focus at our school right now. We have noticed that this is the time of year where students get, well, you guys might know, senioritis or also in general, just kind of being close to summer but still feeling like you're far away. So we've just really tried to remind students to continue focusing on academics because summer's coming up before we know it. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Seeley Swan High School.
Hi, I just want to make sure you can hear me before I start.
Yep, we can.
First of all, our Destinations for Education travelers are getting excited for their upcoming trip to Costa Rica. They leave at the end of March and will be gone for about ten days. In February, the travelers worked concessions and held a silent dessert auction during home basketball games. They also hosted a dessert night at the lodges on Seeley Lake, where they hosted a dessert buffet and live auction of desserts the students and travelers made. One final ravel wrapped up the fundraising, and now the tickets are bought, and the travelers can't wait. During the trip, the travelers will be pouring concrete at the local school in Oracy, staying with families in pairs of two, taking Spanish classes, and more. We have seventeen students and three chaperones going on the trip, which is the biggest turnout for destinations yet. For the first time since the two thousand seven, two thousand eight basketball season, our boys' basketball team will be going to state. The team will travel to Butte this Thursday and will play at one-thirty against Scobie. From going to districts as the fifth seed to finishing district second and also placing second in divisionals through a challenge game, the boys and coaches are thrilled about the opportunity to play at state. Our girls' season is unfortunately over. They secured a third-place trophy at districts and fought hard at divisionals. However, they came up a bit short. We are so proud of them this season and will miss our seniors. Our spring sports kicked off yesterday with golf and track practices. We are hoping for high turnouts for both sorts and successful seasons up ahead. Our eight BPA members are at state this week, competing for a chance to go to Nationals in Orlando this spring. We are proud to announce that two of our juniors secure their spot in Nationals this week through the virtual branding team category. During state competition this weekend, our podcast group, composed of three freshmen, placed second, a senior in individual presentation placed first, and a junior in graphic design promotion placed top ten, all securing their spots to Nationals as well. We wish them the best of luck in Orlando later this May. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sentinel High School.
A couple weeks ago, our robotics team built a new robot and were able to reveal it. It took an incredible amount of collaboration, brilliance, dedication, and time. Our theater department had three members elected to the student state board, as well as earning many other acting scholarships from the University of Montana. At the beginning of last week, Sentinel's band attended the AA Band Festival. During that time, we also had students attending the Academic World Quest Competition. We had teams come back in first and fourth place, and our first-place team will be going to Washington DC and then also to India. Our speech and debate team had two champs, a junior in impromptu speaking and a sophomore in original oratory. This past weekend, Hosa participated in the Women's Fair at the University of Montana. Tomorrow, March twelfth, our key club will host their second blood drive of the year. Our senior English classes have been working with the Montana riding coaches on many occasions. This provides students with feedback and assistance, which has proven to boost students' confidence and drive to right. So far this year, two hundred thirty-eight students at Sentinel have had this opportunity. Every other year, the Spanish department organizes a trip to Costa Rica. This year, they'll be able to visit a local school and tour a family farm. They'll also watch a professional soccer match and tour the rainforests. They'll have a lot of great learning experiences. Our principal has created a student advisory board, which meets every month. It is made up of diverse student leaders that represent and advocate for their peers in collaboration with the Sentinel administration to enhance and guide community, learning environment, and engagement at their school. As a team, their current goal is to promote inclusion within Sentinel. They have been working to support students so that they feel connected to Sentinel and want to come to school every day. Each month, they have decided to create a theme to promote around the school, with some examples being Chinese New Year, Black History Month, a Super Bowl food drive, celebrating diversity, Indigenous Peoples' Day, cancer awareness, suicide prevention, a toy drive, and more. Wrapping up winter sports, we had fourteen male wrestlers and one female wrestler qualify for state, six of which placed in top six for their weight class. Our girls' swim team won multiple events at state. The boys' basketball team is headed to state this week. Their first game is in Bozeman and will be against Billings West on Thursday at five. They're feeling confident and excited, hoping to finish out the season strong, so make sure to tune into that. Moving into the spring season, we have over three hundred students enrolled in either track, tennis, softball, or baseball. These all started practice yesterday. One more thing that we're super excited about and that was mentioned earlier is Ms. House from our Special Education Department earned Teacher of the Year this year. She's someone who consistently goes above and beyond and not only leads with strength and dedication, but also with a heart full of compassion. Thank you, guys.
Up next, Willard High School.
So we are having eighteen seniors graduate April third, and then we're accepting twenty new students into this fourth quarter. We had some staff return from a restorative practice training program. It was hosted by the National Center Restorative Justice in Seattle. And it looks at implementing resources and tools for support for the community and students, of course, obviously, part of the community. Let's see. So, let's see. We have a prom coming up on May sixteenth. We are still planning on the theme. We're hoping some students may take action and maybe show interest in trying to plan that. We have a CPR certification class and first aid class going on currently. We just had a film class, finished making two films, which they filmed and wrote the scripts for. We partnered up with Roxy for that. We've had lots of students playing basketball with newer students, which is helping with forming stronger friendships and just bonding in the community and the school. We had a school-wide ski day at Discovery on, let's see, what is it, the fifth? And then we are displaying artwork on the first Friday of April, April fourth. So feel free to come and check out the artwork there. And then we are also almost done hiring our coffee cart students. Yeah, and then we are going to try and maybe get some more students to work for that and earn some money.
All right. Thank you so much for those updates from our students. Next up will be announcements from Superintendent Hill. Over to you.
Thank you. This might be like my least favorite time of the year in some respects, when we're having these conversations. And for those who are in our audience tonight, it's not customary for the board to address public comment. It's not meant to be a dialogue. And, but seeing some of the public comments, going to some staff meetings, I thought it was important to try and address a couple of things and give an update on some of our budget and staffing. And I recognize that the decisions that we talk about and the things that are discussed touch the lives of dedicated educators, our students, and our community as a whole. And I'm grateful to those of you who came tonight to speak. And I don't know if anything- And I don't know if anything that I'm gonna say or share is going to impact your advocacy for what you've said tonight, and I just want you to know that I hear what you're saying. We're having those conversations. But I also wanted to have a chance to share some perspective. So, uh, before I dive into any statistics or numbers, I just want to acknowledge the human impact, um, when we talk about these things, and it's not lost on me. I stood with a group of teachers yesterday with tears in their eyes. These are, uh, passionate, dedicated people, uh, who have committed themselves to educating children. They spend their own money on supplies. They give of their personal time to be with kids outside of school. They dedicate so much time and effort and love. They provide academic and emotional support to kids, um, and to families. And, um, they celebrate the achievements of their students as well. And, uh, as we have heard, we recognize those potential impacts to the kids. When we discuss staffing, we're not just moving numbers around on a spreadsheet. We're affecting real people, and I think the board recognizes that. I mean, they get the emails, they get the advocacy, they share that with me. I've obviously had that same too. And we, and we respect that deep sense of community that our schools and our teachers said. All of that being said, we also have to confront a reality. Uh, our K-5 enrollment is down 84 students again this year, from last year to this year. We continue to decrease. In practical terms, that represents about seven to nine teaching positions because of the way that our budgets are built around A and B. Eighty percent of our funding for our general fund comes from A and B, which is a number that is used to multiply times the number of kids you have, and that determines, it's about $500,000 worth of, of funding that is no longer available to us, because our numbers from the previous year is what supports the next year's budget. Currently, our district in EL through five has 328 seats available. To put perspective on that, we have 277 students at Franklin Elementary. We could literally take every student at Franklin Elementary and absorb it into our current staffing without going over any accreditation standards. It's a big number. And what that really reflects is we're staffed about 90%, 91% of capacity. I say that, and then in the same breath, I also hear a kindergarten teacher say, "I have 22 kids in my kindergarten classroom. Don't tell me the average is 19.2." But we generally talk in averages, and I get that over is over. We also have 338 students district-wide who are leveled to another school. Because of how we have traditionally done things at MCPS, trying to accommodate this need or that need, or to accommodate the desire to have equality. If I have 28 kids in my classroom and someone else has 21, I have seven less, that person has seven less kids, and I'm thinking to myself, "Well, that's seven more conferences, maybe that's another IAP, maybe it's those things that were referenced tonight." And so it's a real balancing act to try and figure out how we do all of that. We took a different approach this year. Last year, we pink slipped every non-tenured teacher. So we essentially said to 200-plus employees, "You've been laid off, and we'll let you know sometime in the future if you're gonna have a job." It's not a very humane thing to do. It's a morale killer. It's super hard on people. And so we made a con, a conscious decision not to do that this year. The net result of that is what happens through the collective bargaining process and the agreements that we have in the collective bargaining agreement and how that impacts teachers. And I, and I, I hear it, I'm frustrated by it. I think there's some things we could do to change that, but, um, we did that. And so, the other thing that's not talked about is even though we've talked about cutting these other, some of these positions, uh, we've also added five positions, K through eight, um, to address those growing class sizes and some of those other things that happened. So, um, we have a net reduction of three positions. So in, in kind of bigger picture terms, we're going from roughly one teacher to every, to 21 students, district-wide, just EL through five, uh, and we're gonna, it's gonna go up by .83 students per classroom, so it's less than one student per classroom. That is the net result of, of this. It doesn't take away from the fact that someone's gonna come in here and say, "My job was affected." I get it. We prioritized communicating early with our staff so that they knew that they had options. If someone was going to be reduced, we want to give them that chance. There are 31 teachers this year that are on a current year-only contract, meaning they're filling in for maternity leave, or they're filling in for another leave of absence, or a sabbatical, uh, for a variety of reasons. And they've been told that they're not, they don't have a job coming back next year. Some of them are grant-funded, there's a variety of things that go on, but we're trying to make sure that, whether it's through attrition or any other way, that we're supporting our staff, the ones that we currently have. Another layer to all of this is just the balancing of priorities. Parents want their kids to attend their neighborhood school with minimal disruption. Teachers want manageable class sizes that give them the ability to give the students the attention that they need and deserve. Students with special needs require more support through specialized programs. Our budget requires us to make choices between support resources, including special education, uh, English language learner specialists, behavior interventionists, social workers, uh, arts programs, overflow paras, uh, permanent substitutes. Like, we're trying to do all those things to take care of everybody. And we have to balance that. If the balance is, we want smaller class sizes, it might mean that the board has forced into a decision to say, "Well, then we have to cut something else to accommodate that request." And I don't know what that is. And that's the hard part. Our financial realities, uh, we depend on passing our operational levies. We have, uh, an operational levy of $200,000 approximately at the elementary and $600,000 at the high school. If those don't pass, we're talking more reductions. We're talking about the STARS Act in the legislature and a lot of things that are yet undetermined and not confirmed, but there's $3 million on the table in the STARS Act. We need that to pass. That's something that's meant to help our budgets and do those things. The simple truth is we cannot maintain the same staffing levels with the same budget when we have declining enrollments. And I'm, just to put it out there for our community, and maybe we should have done a better job of this last year, but there are 500 students in kindergarten right now, 503 in first grade, and 566 in second grade. There are 623 students in fourth grade. It takes 25 teachers to staff at 20 students a classroom to serve kindergarten. It takes 17 teachers to staff 500 kids in fourth grade, and there's currently 26 or 27. So we know, like, we can project out that they're going to continue, as long as enrollments continue to be either flat or declining, that we're going to continue to have to make decisions about where to make the program, programmatic cuts. Sometimes, the decision is, we are going to increase class sizes in order to save someone else's job, or to provide for students in a different way. And it's, it's just a hard reality for us. I would love to be able to say, "I want every classroom staff to 1 to 20." It would take 15 more teachers and a cost of over a million dollars in salary alone to do that. I don't control the budgets from the state, I don't control the budgets from the federal government. We don't, we don't get to raise the cost of something when the prices go up. We just have something that we have to live and work within. All of that being said, um, I do remain hopeful, uh, about our district's future. We have dedicated staff, we have dedicated administrators, we have a group of people who come together and work together to, to try and make the best decisions possible for our staff and our, excuse me, our staff and our students. We have a community that values education, and, and we're grateful for that, and we want to continue to see that happen. It's, you know, the job of our trustees, through me, to ensure that we are living up to our promises. And I don't think there's a trustee in here that would say, "Micah, we want you to raise class sizes to 33." They wouldn't support me in doing that, I guarantee you. And so, part of this is just trusting that there's a, that there is a process. And we're gonna find a way forward. We did it last year. We don't have in-classes that are two-over. We have some that are one-over, some that are two, but nobody is more than two-over. And so we will do that. So I just, again, I just want to acknowledge that we understand the human impact. It's not lost on us. We're not sitting back here like, "How do we make someone's life miserable?" Or make it even harder than it already is. That's all.
Next up is item seven, which is the consent agenda item. We'll have two motions in elementary and a high school. The consent agenda items are routine, there will be no board discussion. Is there a motion to approve the elementary consent agenda items? Moved by trustee Walsh, seconded by Vice Chair of Garris. There is no board discussion. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor of approving the consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Is there a motion to approve the high school consent agenda items? Moved by trustee Wake. Seconded by Vice Chair of Garris. There is no board discussion. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor of approving the high school consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Item eight is old business, and is to approve the second reading of Board Policy 3630 Electronic Devices. And I'll go ahead and turn it back to, back over to you, move Superintendent Hill.
Thank you. So, tonight, we are, um, looking at our electronic device policy for, uh, perhaps the final time before asking the board to approve. Outside of, um, some anecdotal discussions, I have not had a lot of conversation with anybody, um, uh, relative to the policy. Um, we did get some late, uh, public comment on it, um, uh, recently, just through email, uh, but generally speaking, there isn't more to add or, um, take away from what was discussed and what's being recommended.
CNN, it, this would be a full board motion to adopt the revised policy.
I will add that we did add, make all of the edits and ran this back through legal counsel, um, and put reference into, uh, other board policy, MCA 418213. So those additions were, and suggestions were all added and amended.
Trustee Mercer.
I guess on that note, so, the, on the elementary school, the parents picking up is struck and off, but it still exists on the high school. Was that not changed? I, I just don't honestly remember. If, I, I guess my, my impression was at the time, it was for both, but I could be totally wrong about that. So procedurally, are we in, able to make an emotion level, amendment motion? Or is that not where we at?
I see it on, on page 24, it says, "Repeat offenders may be required to have parent meetings or parent pickup of the confiscated device." But it says unauthorized use will returned to the student at the end of the day. So if you're a repeat offender, you might have to have a parent come and pick up your phone in high school. On page, the top of page 20, where'd it go? 24.
Yeah, I mean, the might, and the might was, I mean, this, okay, so, again, I thought it was for both, and that's probably on me not to clarify back when we did it. My core concern is unchanged, under no circumstance does it seem safe to send a kid home alone with the only means of communication that would have been in the house. Without, without that. And I just, that's, I don't know. My kid's at home alone, working parent stuff, and I just, the fact that there is no landline in the house, I, I don't know how we would ever justify doing that. Last time the administration said, "Well, you know, we, it's May, we wouldn't necessarily do that." And I guess I just come from a land of, um, "Well, then why would you allow it if it's never gonna happen? Why do you have a policy that enables it if you're claiming you would never use it?" So. I, I don't know. I mean, I guess we've moved along, I certainly want to be done with this as much as everybody else, but, um, I was surprised to see that there still, I guess.
And that's on the high school one?
Yeah, it's on the page 24.
Right.
And apparently, our discussion at the time was in elementary landed, but...
Trustee Davy.
Yeah, I would just say my recollection was that it was taken out of both as well, um, so that there was not the chance that we'd be taking the phone if a young person needed it to communicate. So I know we've, we've done a lot on this, and it would suck to send it out for 45 days, but, um, I think it would be okay to do that, to get it right.
Yeah, I agree as well. So, we can approve the elementary one and then send the high school one back out? Or do you want to keep them together? It's all one?
We would just need to make it a recommendation for a friendly amendment to the, to add it.
To strike.
Yeah, to strike that out.
Then it would go back out for reading for another 45 days? Okay.
That's regrettable, and I guess, but I just, I value this enough, and I, you know, everyone could vote their conscience on this, but my, I make a motion, if we're at that stage, to do the exact same thing we did for elementary, strike out, or a parent to pick up the confiscated device, um, from the, I guess it's the fourth filled-in bullet on the high school. So just take out the exact same language to match the elementary. That's a long-winded way to say that, sorry.
Is there a second? Second by trustee Hayes. Any, um, comments or questions? There's no board discussion on that part. So all those in favor of appro, oh, public comment. Public comment, gotcha. Any public comment on this agenda item?
Uh, yes. First, we have, uh, Morgan Slumber.
Press the wrong button to start. Um, thank you so much for all you're doing for public schools. Hoofda, I didn't anticipate, um, all that you're sitting through tonight. Um, so, I did hear a teacher say, you know, when teachers have to stop, um, class over and over and over again, and I know that's a big reason why we initially, you know, really pleaded with you all to start a policy, and boy, am I so glad to see that this is all happening for the benefit of our community, our kids and our teachers. So, thank you. I just wanted to point out, the schools around the country are going increasingly completely phone-free. And data consistently shows improvements in behavior, mental health, school culture, and so much so that our governor wants this in addition. So, my question to you is, why are high schoolers not equally deserving of a phone-free environment like their K to eight counterparts? Why is it that high schoolers who get cyberbullied especially in passing periods and lunch are not being provided the same benefits that their younger counterparts will be? Allowing phones periodically during the day for compelling reasons means mental health will continue to decline, and teachers will yet again have to enforce a lot of gray area. When we've heard how much, um, they're doing already, we're still asking them. And I still believe this would fundamentally reduce your ROI. this would fundamentally reduce your ROI when you're looking, or reduce your teacher burnout, teachers quitting. I think it would really support that. So why are we not being leaders in this space, really just going for it? Why are we settling for mediocre when we look at this policy in high school? And I just hate to think that we're putting past fears of parent pressure in front of what's best for our kids, our community, our teachers as a whole. School's supposed to be a really amazing environment to learn, and to learn more about yourself safely, and phones are getting in the way of that. So I'd strongly encourage you, if you are going back out for 45 days, to really consider that high school component, if we really want our kids to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Peterman.
Hi, everybody, again. Erica Peterman, P-E-T-E-R-M-A-N-E-R-I-K-A. The whole plan is to defund public education, which is not your fault, and I'm sorry that you have to deal with it. I'm sorry that any of us are here to be upset about what's happening, but it's not your fault. We have a constitutional right to equality education. Our kids have a constitutional right. And I think that we all need to start acting entitled to that, in the same way that billionaires act entitled to continue to have more money in their pockets. And I, I've recently started a series that I'm directing and producing called Public School Kids. And the purpose of the series is to celebrate the great public school kids in Montana. And it's the entrepreneurs, it's the athletes, it's everybody who's been shaped by Montana's public school system. And one of the questions that I ask people when I interview them is, what does it mean to be a public school kid? I'm sorry, I'm about to cry, because it's just, I'm just seething right now with anger at what's happening. But generally, the answers are the golden rule, which is do unto others, and the other one is honesty. And when I ask them what they think Montana values are, it's basically the same answer, which doesn't surprise me at all. What I would add to the definition of a public school kid is community. It's a, it's a kid who is invested in their community, both when they're in school and after they leave public school. And I, I think what we have an opportunity to do now, even if there isn't any money, is to create the types of communities that we want for our kids. And the whole reason I got involved in banning phones from schools is because when we have kids on our phones during passing periods and at lunch, they don't know who they're in community with. They don't know who they're going to public school with. And as we continue to lose places where people from all walks of life come together, really the last major one we have, all over Montana, especially in rural places, Montana has more school, rural schools than any other state, is we lose those communities of people, because they're constantly looking down at the trash that's on their phone, and it's trash. And that's, again, not your fault, but we need to be holding the people who have the power to let our kids see that accountable. But that doesn't mean that we can't prevent it from infiltrating our school systems. And I think we, what we have an opportunity to do, what you have an opportunity to do, is to shape the communities in our public schools, because that shapes the communities that become our Montana communities. And I don't want our Montana communities to have people with their heads down. Thank you. Porter Hammett.
Here we go. Yep. Hi, Porter Hammett here. Again, I know I've been here a few times. I'm trying to stand on top of the phone policy issue. I'm glad that we have some time to add a few more comments. I guess it's hard to keep up with where things are in the parliamentary cycle, or whatever, you know, how things are being, when they're going to be approved, et cetera. So I read through the, you know, the preliminary, or the proposed draft and everything. As my two friends said, I, I agree as well. I don't, I don't know why or who proposed this writing, but why are we allowing phone use during passing? Like, is there a compelling reason why we need to have that? Because I can think of a lot of compelling reasons why we should not. And I'm just not aware of that at all. Again, I have a teach, a wife who's a teacher, seventh grade. I have two high school boys. And we all know the reasons, you know? If I was to, you know, do a little act here and do this, you know, we've all seen this, you know, we've all seen this, like, under the desk, you go on campus at UM, you know, everywhere in society, people, their heads are buried in their phones. It happens at school and passing as well. I just, I really think our best policy is to go phone-free, you know, during the day. Just remove the distraction. We all know, you know, you sent that text or email, kids just can't stand it. They've got to see who did so-and-so, you know, reply about who was seen with who last night. It's just crazy. And then we have phones, and, you know, all the metrics are, not the metrics, but the programming in the phones is just designed to suck us in and keep us engaged. And kids are so susceptible to those addictive behaviors. Other schools around the nation are doing it, you know, going phone-free. And I, I just think there's a lot of really compelling reasons to just say phones need to stay put away during the school day. I don't know of any good compelling reason why you would argue otherwise. You know, I guess this is not a dialogue, so that's what I would encourage you to consider. Let's just be hard and fast. We know that kids, they wear us down, they look for every angle, you know, they argue and complain and blah, blah, you know, and they go, oh my God, okay, okay, fine, you know, give in at some point, or we just can't, we don't have the energy to look at, you know, what's going on all the time. Just make it cut and dry. Say, I'm sorry, that's the rule, phones away. You know, it makes it easier on teachers, easier on parents, easier on administrators. Let's get back to focusing on giving kids, you know, the good education that they deserve. Let's focus on eliminating all these, you know, adverse effects that we're seeing pop up, you know, in scientific literature now. You know, isolation, bullying, depression, humiliation, at times suicide. Wow, it's just awful. You know, the least we can do, get them out of the schools, you know, reduce the, you know, if they're going to go home, who knows what they're doing at home. Hopefully they're not on their phone all night, but let's get them out of the schools.
Thank you. It's three minutes. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so all those in favor to approve the revised cellphone policy, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Wake, yes. Davies, yes. Vice sheriff Garris, yes. Chair Old Person, yes. Trustee Mercer, yes. Trustee Walsh, yes. Trustee Hayes, yes. All in favor. So that will go back out for 45 days with that. So next up is item nine, which is new business. And up is to draft the permissive levy resolutions. And this is over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So, so this is an estimate of an estimate. So the board is required to set levies, set budgets in August, 20th of August. And you're also required to identify estimated permissive levies by the end of this month. And we'll do that at next, at the next board meeting on March 25. So this is an estimate of, of those estimates. And they're, they're early, and we wanted to share those with you. They relate to budgeted funds. These are all permissive, non-voted levies. The focus is on the change or the increase. And we've talked a bit about some of these. But they're, they're, you know, pretty significant. The transportation and tuition fund increases. And the transportation relates to the percentage increase negotiated with Beach. It also includes our plan to purchase vans and assume some routes and staff those routes. And so when I, when I look at the estimate, I think it's, you know, definitely an estimate. It also doesn't contemplate the reduced cost of the routes, too. So we'll refine these numbers, but it, it still will be a pretty, pretty good number. The tuition levy, this is where we levy excess special ed costs. And in the elementary, we'll look to go to full levy amount. We estimate at 550. The other piece is, is, is with the change in the law regarding out-of-district students. The law requires the resident district to pay the home district the tuition amount for students from the resident district attending the out-of-district district. And so we have a pretty sizable estimate there of about 250,000. So that's on the elementary side. In addition, the resolution that you'll see in two weeks will include the planned expenditure of the building reserve permissive levy. We're showing that is going down, only because we anticipate the state picking up more of that obligation. What's missing here is the bus appreciation fund. We will incorporate that. The amount of the levy will be real small, but we can anticipate a 20% of the, the investment in those vans as a permissive levy to plan for replacement. Also, the new resolution will have estimates at 100, 300, and 600,000. You'll see those across the top. The high school resolution, similar information. Again, in total, you know, it's a, it's a pretty good increase. On the high school side, we have transformational funding that'll go through the flex fund, so that's a, a good thing, but it, it does have a permissive levy. Adult ed, this was an increase on the elementary side, larger here because of the programming. This is for some facility improvements, much like, like Glasgow around here, specifically the boiler. And then the, the same, same comments on the transportation side, as well as the boost on the, on the, or showing the resolution at 300, 100, 300, 600. The, I was hoping tonight to give you some, some FY27 estimates on voted levy, but the, the state just came out with the preliminary budget sheets. So we'll do that with the, the budget levy committee on Friday. Really, just look at the projections for FY26, and then extend it to FY27, because I really think it's important to look at what the overbase or those operational levies would be in 2027, before you make a decision to run two levies in the high school, one for the safety and one for that operational levy. I think the operational levy is really important, and I don't want to diminish that. And I want to, you know, really have the board think, think, think about that before they, they go out to the, the public for a, a second safety levy on the high school side. And, you know, we'll obviously talk more about that with the budget levy committee and with the board in two weeks. But this factors into it when you start looking at the permissive levy increases, too. So that is all I have.
And this is information only. Are there any questions or comments from a trustee? Trustee Davy?
Yeah, thanks. I just, I have one clarifying question, then a second question. I just want to clarify that what is in those final columns is the increase in what would be taken, or is that the total?
That is the increase. That's, that's based upon the change.
Okay.
So you can see the change in mills, and that dollar amount reflects that.
Okay, great. And then we have talked previously about a special ed permissive levy, and I don't see that on the sheet. Does it have a different name?
Yeah, it's under the tuition fund. You probably didn't hear me say that, though. The tuition fund includes the excess special ed costs. And for next year, it's also going to include the, the levy amount to pay tuition, or the tuition to the, in the, the districts, out-of-districts that are serving our students. This was a new statute. So when we have kids go to Target Range, we'll calculate the amount of tuition. We get to pay that to Target Range instead of the parents whose kids attend Target Range. And then that, those funds go into the general fund to offset the base levy. So it's not a boost in funding, it just reduces what their local taxpayers pay as part of the base levy. So it's going to be high in the elementary. We're figuring 250.
Okay. And what would, I mean, that, is that based on our current budget projection or on some of the needs that we're hearing?
The excess special ed?
Yeah.
That's based upon, we can only charge excess special ed costs. So we'll evaluate by, by students, the amount of expenditures for staffing and otherwise in support of that student. And then we can levy the amount in excess what we otherwise would get per student from the state.
Okay.
So, so it's a bit of a moving target. The, the special ed department helps us pull those, that information together. Right now, we're, we are right there in the high school at the full amount. The elementary would be 550 to get us to full.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Do we have a estimation as to how much we, how much we're paying out other districts for students attending their schools, and how much we have coming in? Is it a pretty equitable, or we, no?
Yeah, more going out. So we have more of our students in, in out-of-districts than, than come in. And that's the, I mean, when, well, like, tonight was maybe the, the students attending our district. I think what you do is you acknowledge when students choose to go to a different district. And, and we have over 100 students that go to Target Range. And they've gone there when there was no tuition obligation, so that was just a parent's choice that they would go there.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, next up is to award the bid for internet services, RFP. And this is over to you, Brian.
Maybe before Brian goes, because he knows this topic really well, is that the recommendation would be to approve the contract to be negotiated. So we're in the process of negotiating that contract.
Pat's my contract guy. Um, yeah, this is a difficult process for us. Every three years, we go out for a bid for internet service. We worked with an E-Rate consultant, E-Rate being FCC program that pays, reimburses of 60% of all costs. So we typically work with an E-Rate consultant now, just to make sure everything is right there. They came back, and we had three bids for internet service. We had Blackfoot Communications, Spectrum Enterprise, and Zipley Fiber. The recommendation from our consultant, who actually rated it this year, was to stay with Blackfoot, and I would second that as well.
Any questions from a trustee? This is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Wake, seconded by trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All those in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to award the bid for data services for Sealy Swan High School, RFP. And back over to you, Brian.
So Sealy is our only active school that we don't currently have fiber to, just because of its location. We have to lease that link. And again, same thing, we went to bid. We got two bids, one from Blackfoot, one from Spectrum. And the bid from Blackfoot was recommended. And yeah, I should just stick with that.
Any questions by trustee? This is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Wake. Oh, high school, high school. Sorry. Is there a motion by, moved by trustee Wake, seconded by trustee Davy? Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is personnel negotiations and policy. And the personnel report is over to you, Mr. Lebowski.
Thank you. Actually, this is pretty standard. I have really nothing to add unless you have any questions.
Trustee Walsh?
Oh, my gosh, I saw that ag position, the ag ed position is maybe on a leave. Are we, oh, my God, I love her. What's going on with that position?
Well, that's a sabbatical leave. So people apply for sabbatical leave as per their collective bargaining agreement, and there's a, there's a committee of teachers and admin who evaluate those anonymously. So she was approved for a sabbatical.
But we'll get her back?
Well, if teachers don't return from sabbatical to the district, they have to repay the health insurance premium that the district covered during that time. Yeah. Yeah.
Trustee Mercer?
What is a leave of absence to teach?
Yeah, really good question. So we have, there are a number of leave of absence opportunities. In fact, I think there's five or six different ones you can get through the collective bargaining agreement. We also offer people leaves of absence in situations where they're going to try a new job within the district, where we can't quite guarantee that that job's going to be there for a while. So when you're asking somebody, and this really goes back to the idea that the number one reason educators left teaching was, used to be pay, and now it's becoming more and more professional opportunity. So we want to encourage people to take jobs within the district. That's one of the beauties of being a larger district. So last year, they were granted leave from their home buildings where they're assigned to teach and teach. By the time we got to the staffing component of the contract, we didn't have clarity on what the teaching load would be at teach, what grade level they would be teaching. So it only seemed fair to offer them a second year of leave of absence. And the two tenured teachers in those spots opted to do that.
Any other questions? Trustee Witcher?
So all of these, these changes that are being proposed at Chief Charlo and all that sort of stuff, that, nothing's set in stone right now, because we're waiting on all the logistical nature of what's actually going to happen.
Yeah, and I think if you recall ESAR last year, we knew ESAR was coming for years. And myself and the union president at the time started in October, meeting with people individually. And I think it was 80, 90 people that we had individual meetings with that ended in March. A typical year where you don't see pink slips across the board, we have a choice. We can either wait and see if we have to cut that position later, or we start early, make cuts, give people notice, give them time to participate in their collectively bargained process, which is nine pages, the placement process in the contract is nine pages. We also have a pretty hefty handbook that governs those processes in HR. That handbook, although not in the collective bargaining agreement, is standard practice. And when you have standard practice and you go against it, that's also, could be an unfair labor practice. So there's a lot of rules and things that happen. So it's incumbent upon us as a district to really provide the opportunities afforded to them. So we start early and we notify early. Similar to pink slips, non-tenured teachers don't need to be pink slipped. We can, we can remove non-tenured teachers, not offer them a job next year, all the way up to June 1. But what a pink slip does, or any kind of notice, is it says, there's a possibility. This is your opportunity to participate in your collectively bargained agreement and also to possibly look for a job outside the district. I would always rather defend letting people know early than letting people know late. The reality is, and I'll give you an example of Washington, last year or a couple of years ago, had 240 seats in grade six. A couple of weeks before school, they were at 257. You cannot go over with an overload para in middle school. We worked that out. We worked the 17 students out, some by attrition, some by move, some by choice, some by cold call, does anybody want to go back? Looking at the list of the people that wanted to go to Porter or Meadow Hill in the past, we keep track of all of that. So we get to where we need to be. It's just an awful, awful, oftentimes seemingly inhumane process that folks have to go through. We do our best to notify and to get in front of staffs when we have that happen. This year's a little different, because we didn't pink slip everybody. So when you don't do that, and it's a, it's a, it's a choice. We talked to the union beforehand, we're always connected to the union with all of these decisions and all of these moves. Today, we're in what's called the admin placement portion. So that's where we can actually move people within this process. We have an umbrella of rights, of administrative rights. Within that umbrella are processes that are collectively bargained, the rails that we have. But when we get into this zone of leaves of absence, looking at returns from sabbaticals, looking at in-building postings, looking at the second round of in-building postings, looking at displacement of tenured teachers, looking at the displaced pool for tenured teachers, looking at recall of non-tenured teachers, and then arenas for our classified employees also have negotiated rights. It is a nightmare. And I know that working with union leadership, we see some of the issues that are in the contract. We made some headway last year, we're going to hopefully make some headway next year so that we don't have to disrupt as many tenured teachers when we don't pink slip. There's a real domino. I invite any of you to come and sit with me for an hour or two, and I'm happy to walk you through that process. It's really cumbersome. But again, the goal is to provide them as many opportunities as possible. So in, you know, in regards to 33 students, we're not going to be at 33 students. In regards of moving kids around, a lot of this has to do with last year and some of the positions that we chose to fill. When people took leaves of absence last year, we made decisions not to fill those leaves of absence. Typically, we would put a job in that role and have it be a current-year-only position. We didn't do that to save money so we could save other jobs for that one year. And consequently, we moved kids from Chief Charlo to Russell that want to be at Chief Charlo. Now we can move them back, and we can add a class at grade one. So there's, there's a lot of nuances. And I get the feelings that folks have, and it is an emotional process. It's very difficult. But like Superintendent Hill said, you know, we have a limited funding source, and we have to manage that well. And then we have to talk with the board about priorities. Where do we put funding? You all have a different set of funding priorities, and we have to manage that. It's a difficult process.
Trustee Davie?
Thank you, chairperson. So I just, I have three things I want to talk about with you, Trevor. First, I just want to ask that in the future, board members have a sense when those conversations are going to happen. It was pretty hard for us to get blindsided by it. And then I have some questions about, it's really clear to me in the personnel policy that we have a lot of para turnover. And so having heard that para, yeah, that some of the solutions could be overflow paras, and then thinking about how much a para costs versus a new teacher, and so I'd like to have some of those conversations, either in a three-on-one or moving forward about this. And then I am curious, based on our last conversations around the teacher pay scale when we're thinking about the Stars Act and trying to meet that 50%, that some of our teachers who have been here for 45 years make a good wage, which I am highly in support of. But I'm wondering if we have looked at the possibility of, like, retirement buyout savings or something similar to that that could allow us to have more teachers that are kind of in the middle of their teaching career and some new teachers coming in with the Stars money?
Are you asking me if we've talked about those things?
Yes.
Yes, the answer is yes. Yep, definitely. Those are all things that we've discussed at length. I'd be happy to join a three-on-one to talk about that. Overflow paras are generally people who are working for us already, potentially as a noon duty or different positions. Those are typically meant to go away when the enrollment drops. In the past, practice has been that we keep them there as long as possible just to continue helping, because folks get used to them and the systems get in place. But overflow paras are very different than a center-based paraprofessional or a resource paraprofessional. So I think it's, it's kind of a bad use of verbiage. But yeah, we, I'm happy to join. Yep.
Any other questions about the personnel report? All right, so we'll have two motions in elementary and a high school. Is there a motion from elementary trustee to approve the personnel report? Moved by Vice Chair of Garris. Second by trustee Hayes. Any final trustee comments? Sina, any public comment on this agenda item? All elementary trustees in favor of approving the personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Is there a motion from a high school trustee to approve the move by trustee Wake? Second by Vice Sheriff Garris. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor of approving the high school personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. The time is now 7:41, and we are adjourned. Good job, everybody.
Guys, the BPA results just came